All right. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Monday, June 10th, 7 o'clock. Roll call.
Paul Marzlik.
Ben Keel.
Michelle Adam.
Mike Johnson.
Kirby Blaina.
Jeff Belter.
William Corwin.
All right. Pastor Paul is not here today, so we're gonna have Teresa Marzlik. Come on out.
Could you just bow your heads in prayer? Father, thank you so much for your presence here. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to represent our city and to make decisions in the best interest of our city. Father, we acknowledge that we know nothing without you and we are dependent upon your help to lead and guide this council. Father, we ask that you would give them wisdom to make decisions on the best behalf of this city. We ask that you would align the council's will and the will of this city with your will. We ask that you would bless this council, that you would bless each person, that you would bless their families. We just ask that you would have your way tonight, and we offer this time up to you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Flag flagging.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Here we got a couple changes on the agenda. We're gonna take under new business, emergency management, and move it up to the fire department. And to section B.
I want to add a line to the paid planning consulting.
What do we add?
I'll write down.
That's it?
I'm just gonna make a statement.
Okay.
It would be, okay, the plan's only going to.
All right. Anything else? Is there an approval for the agenda?
I may make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Uh, any questions on the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get it done?
Did you do that?
Oh, they both.
I did.
Yeah. They beat it to the punch.
You were late.
All right. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Open forum, we have.
Sorry. Scribbling too much.
Is this Jason?
Jason, yeah.
Come on up, Jason. I'm like, oh, sorry.
Sorry. It was kind of rude.
All right. Come on up.
Do I need to set the three minute timer? Or are you?
You don't need to.
Just say your name and address.
You just pulled that, it was too close. Too many. So, I'm Jason France and your brother, brother councilman next door, Delmo. And I watched a King or Time because I wanted to talk about two things. So, one, that's probably near and dear to your heart, or at least peripherally anyway. You're probably aware that we had Northwest Business Park, we had trouble filling over the last several years, and we took it over and we hired a broker and had open bidding for development. We're happy to say, you know, that the, all the land purchases for the three companies that wanted to come to Delmo, to the Business Park have all been completed. Kit KLN Brands and Landscape Structures Aquatics Division has closed, as well as Randy Sanitation, which is Randy's Rentals. Each one of these is quite large structures. Kit KLN specifically, which is on the berm, is expanding. They do dog treats, dog food. They used to do a barrel of gold potato chips, I think, or something. Puppies, dog food.
Oh, pardon me.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, at least they're remembering the topics. But they're gonna be $200,000 square feet with the option to go to almost a half a million square feet someday, and things of interest, they have the land. Randy's Rentals is going to be about $50,000 square feet at least with thirty some employees. And lastly, the Aquatics Division for Landscape is about $175,000 square feet. I can have to look at my numbers again, but it's a sizable structure, obviously, to contain what, you know, construction for water parks and things like this. But the point being to this, of course, while ties into Montrose, is that even though it's not in the town of Montrose, you have, you do well with, you have workforce housing more than we do and things, and I'm hoping that you will see more development like this and will love more good lots to be filled up and things like this. So, helps your tax structure and get to use the sort of plan, all those kinds of things. So, we're happy, happy to see that and happy for our neighbors and we're believing others to benefit as well. So, happy, happy about that. But, I mean, I think that certainly the mayor's talked about it many times, but, you know, first and foremost, people complain about how we dwell, and rightly so, and I've always been formal, verbal about this and complain about myself, but, you know, it's nice when you have jobs in place, so people don't have to drive. And not just adults or somebody, but some jobs that can provide a living, buy home and things like this. So, anyways, questions? Okay. Lastly, this is things you might see in the paper, but I'm gonna just elaborate a little bit on it. Having participated in the, in the petition process about the bond purchase that the county's attempting, it was a number of weeks ago, I spoke there and things, so there's a number of people in town that did help in that effort, and I was part of that Franklin Township as well as in Delmo. The final total, as you probably know, was, the goal was $2,900 or some fifty, but they were hoping for three, and it was kind of touch and go for a while there, but we actually got $4,600. Now, regardless of how people feel about it, and people have a right to disagree, and I would prefer we didn't have to go this direction either, I'd rather just, you know, that we can give our input to the commissioners and that people really will listen. But it is an instrument of democracy and it's a very direct instrument of democracy and stuff, so, and to be able to speak. I just wanted to report that, and there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow to decide this fully, but the, the committee of the whole that met last Tuesday in the afternoon, they, they talked about various options that they could do with it, and it is in there, they don't have the full minutes, but they have an elaboration on it. And suffice to say, they talked about tax abatement bonds as an alternative, which I'm not sure though what that would mean, it was not recommended. They could put the petition on the shelf for a year, and then the petition would expire, actually, could start the process over, or that you could have a vote here in the fall, which there'd be a cost to that, of course. And the lastly, and I think, I believe this is where they're gonna go with it, and this is an instrument that we don't use in Delmo, and Montrose would either, but it's called a certificate of participation, and it's essentially, it's a lease purchase option. And the company, I believe, that the architectural firm and the builders are offering to build the building instead of using geo-bonds to have, to lease the building back to the county and to its residents and things. So, the financial parameters, I'm not familiar with, but anyways, it was recommended that that go forward as a resolution, and they'll be discussing that tomorrow morning at eight, at nine o'clock, I suspect, early in the process tomorrow morning. So, for those of you that have strong feelings, one way or the other, recommend a wink if you can pull away for a little while, and things, I'd recommend it. It's gonna affect your community too, and those that are business owners and stuff like this, it is a notable tax increase.
Yeah, this is the first item on the time of January.
Yep, that's right. That's right. So, anyways, but that, that's it. So, come with good news and some new foolish news too. So, anyways, but thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see, I hope I see all of you in the loop. Lincoln Associates?
No.
Come on, you guys, are you not gonna go?
No, I, it's, that's what, Thursday, Friday?
What, uh, start? Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but Thursday, Friday's the critical days.
Yeah. Thursday, yeah, that's when I leave for vacations, so.
That's my anniversary. Have fun, huh?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Wright County Sheriff's Department.
So, after several months of having fillings for deputies throughout the community here, we now have an assigned deputy who's working our 6:00 PM until 2:00 AM shift. I can introduce you, Deputy Connor Garrett. He is gonna be the primary deputy here in town during those hours. He actually requested this assignment through myself and our lieutenant. So, just a little history, that doesn't happen very often.
Right.
I can think of one person who requested it, and that would be me back in '07 and '08. So, he's been doing a fantastic job his first couple of weeks here in town, and actually been with the Sheriff's Office for a little over two years.
October of 2017, so.
It'll be, it'll be two years here shortly, so. Um, he's doing a fantastic job, staying very busy. We're excited to have him here, actually, and the staff and council as well, so. Um, no real updates as far as activity goes in town. I would remind council, staff, systems, everybody, make sure your doors are locked, garage doors are closed, vehicles aren't having any valuables in them. We have had a rash of burglaries and community incidents, not here yet, but in other communities that are.
Yeah, I heard that on some of my news.
On some of the deals in Michael Buffalo, Rockford, they all been hit pretty hard. So, it's just a matter of time before we start seeing it down here as well. So, just reminder, lock your doors, don't keep valuables in your cars, keep your garage doors shut, help us, help you, essentially, so.
When will he be in Montrose, will he or horse be?
So, 6:00 PM to 2:00 in the morning, I'm in Montrose.
What dates?
Uh, six days on, three days off, at vicarious.
We work a nine day work week, so he's here for the majority of them. Then you still have your day cards?
What's that?
Do you have a card?
I do.
That would be wonderful.
A couple cards maybe?
Yeah, we did do a stack I had on.
If you need any.
We don't want, you don't want to call it your person, say, hey.
Unfortunately, I see him every day, so. Hope there's any other questions.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. All right. City Council.
So, attended Montrose Day Celebration Committee meeting. Pretty much have that buttoned up. Here in the next couple of days, we'll have publication of the revised parade route because with the construction, we're changing things up, because we can't shut down 12, Doug. So, you just had kind of confused look on your face, so, but yeah, so we're.
What construction?
Because they're doing 25, they're rerouting to 12.
Got it.
So.
How do you 25 north?
Yeah, so we can't.
Got it.
So, we can't close it down, so we're revising it to do similar to what we did about three or four years ago, starting over here on Second Street and then sneaking around, so. But then, yeah, so, just keep an eye out, when we get, get it fully published, we'll, we'll get it out there, Facebook and, and to the city, so that way it can be put on the, on the city's website. So, Montrose Day Celebration has come together very nicely. Then I had council meeting, special council, and fire department.
And Ben, I just wanna mention with the Montrose Days, we did receive their liquor application later this morning.
Okay.
And I made the decision not to amend the agenda, put it on, and I'm trying really hard not to do that for transparency reasons for the, the city council. So, Ms. Manson and I talked about it, and if we have it on the July agenda, that's more than enough time to get it approved.
Yeah.
So, just something to bear in mind, if you're with any of your organizations and they want things approved, I'm going to work really hard not to amend the agenda or add things like that because it's, it's not a good perception with the public, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a council meeting, Wright County Economic Development Partnership Board meeting, Wright County Board of Commissioners meetings, Americanism Awards over at Montrose Elementary, two special meetings, and a staff meeting.
All right, the council meeting, two special meetings, the Chamber of Commerce and the Memorial Day service at the Hill.
Council meetings and the special council meetings, planning and zoning and partnering.
Uh, same, council meetings, special meetings, partner rep, the Wright County Community Action Summit meeting, and Community Act. Kevin.
Um, not a whole lot on the fire department side. Very slow month for us, thankfully, for a change, we only have 10 calls for service. No major calls or anything like that. We did go through an ISO audit with the Insurance Service Organization, beginning of May, Matt Menard and myself met with them and went through our ISO. We should get those results in three to six months. Hopefully, our ISO numbers will stay the same, that's what our hope is anyways, if not approved, so. And then acknowledgements to the Delmo Fire Department, they covered our area, although we basically took a night off and kind of went out of town to play some whirlyball, I think, and had some dinner and stuff, just to kind of give ourselves away from the community a little bit.
Did you go anywhere else?
Yeah. And then also, our seven new guys, Eddie Andrea, Jeff Holt, Hallie Hayman, Jake Moe, John Wick, Joel Graves, and Vinnie Mans have completed their new firefighter training. Over 160 hours of training that they've done through, they started in January and just finished recently, all passed, and they're now certified firefighter one, firefighter two, and has an operation. Congratulations to them. Any questions on the activity? Emergency management, so I handed out a document to all of you regarding emergency management. I'm requesting that we get everybody certified in NIMS, that requires IS 700, IS 100, and IS 200. This includes all city council and all city full-time staff and all fire department personnel. The caveat is, fire department personnel have to go through this for their initial training, through firefighter one, firefighter two. And we utilize this on every call, we do training on it multiple times a year, so refresher for us isn't necessarily necessary. I am requesting that everybody, even if they took, taken it 10 years ago, to take it again, just kind of as a refresher, more so than anything. And then, my hope is to have everybody have those street courses done, like the July workshop meeting, and then we'll have a little tabletop discussion about emergency management, what things would look like, what could possibly happen and things, so.
When did you say, July?
July. The July council workshop.
Wait, should I see you during the, or July 22nd, or July 22nd?
Thank you. I can phone that out today after talking with one of you, so, whatever that one is. So, it may be a half hour, so we're not gonna do like a big exercise or anything like that, but just make sure everybody knows what might happen in the event of a large scale or small scale emergency. I'm gonna see if the Wright County Emergency Management Director can come down as well, if we can put base with it, name and things, so.
So, that's what we did last time, is sat in here with them. Remember who it was?
I think it was the Wright County, yeah.
Yeah, we're at Skeeper, yep.
Yep. We did. Yeah.
Four or six hours or something.
It was only a couple.
It was only a couple hours.
So, so the courses in the past have been taught at locations. These courses here are now online courses, it's the only way to get them completed. We could do a course here, taught by myself or something, but it's so much easier just to have people do them online. If you can't do them online, I'm sure city staff could arrange the computer at city hall to get them done or something involved, so. But it is imperative that we get everybody to the level, and FEMA tells are recommended refreshing, and if you're not utilizing it or going through a specific training yearly, they recommend just redoing this every four or five years, is what they were telling me, so. And that's something we can discuss a little bit more at the workshop as well, but it is imperative that we get everybody in line with these, because if we do have a large scale emergency, it'll help raise our disaster funding quicker, that, and also, if you don't have these, you technically can't be involved in said incident, so. And in a big incident, there's gonna be enough roles for everybody to play. I might not necessarily be in the emergency command center, but somebody else might be and Seth might be, and everybody's given tasks, jobs, and stuff, unless you know what that specific role requires, which these classes go over, you're gonna be at a loss and not know where to go from start to finish, so.
If there's an emergency, Kevin, aren't you gonna be a bit tied up to be the director?
No.
No?
We've discussed this at length in the past. A lot of the emergency management stuff is planning and coordinating. In the event of a large scale emergency, things are gonna start basically by following me, the commander, wherever I might be. As we get more resources then, I can take myself out of that position and go to a central location and start backfilling us. If it's a very large scale incident where I can't pull myself from the field, Seth Hanson would then come here. If it hits more than one or two communities, then we would have a unified command post wherever sensibly located is, and we would send a representative to there. And that could be any one of you, it could be somebody from the fire department, as long as they're in the strain, it could be city staff, it could be anybody, so. And that's just our direct link to that command post, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that? If you do have any questions while you're trying to get the classes taken, please let me know. When you do complete one of the tests, create two copies of your certificates, one for me and one for when you keep in your guys' file at the council. Then we'll discuss things a little bit further at the workshop. Gonna feature yourself.
Okay. Don't go on. Jason, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, I agree forcefully saying, I've gone from training myself, you know, the council, I've worked five years, and it's two hours, three, three talks, you know, the question's pretty easy, you just gotta read through the stuff, you know, and, and he's, you know, he's right on the course, and the other thing too, Bob, is that if you don't have that training and things like this, if the, the state doesn't have a, a plan, a way forward, then the state can, can take over the disaster response and things like this, so it's, it's good for the council members, the mayor and all them to understand their job, because if they don't, then it'll fall, then all of those decisions will be made outside of review, so.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Uh, for the record, um, Matt's not here tonight, so he asked me to recap a little bit. It was, I see. Um, we talked about pickleball, but it looks like Wayne's gonna talk about that later. Skating rink at North Bridge Park. Um, the concern is continuing to have the two breaks next year. Summer splash is coming up in July, and they want to ask council approval, which they already have approval, to spend up to $400. They've spent, what is it, $310.30, so they're looking to make an approval if Matt can spend the remainder of the money, which is about $89, on square meters and stuff for the kids to give away. He doesn't need another approval because it's already been approved. He just wants to make it out there. So, Wayne, it's already been approved for $400, but he's only spent $310, so the remainder he wants to put towards, and his question was, if he goes and purchases them, get the receipt, or city staff, whatever you guys wanna do, so. He said he'd purchase them, but.
Yep, you can do that, just give me the receipt.
I told him within days, just under the better getting the receipt.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the other topic was, we had a resident come in, Jeremy Bredick, who lives on Center Avenue over by Carver Fields. He is here tonight. He has some concerns about balls, um, from foul balls that go and hit his home, as well as his neighbor, called Ralston. You guys can see in your minutes what was discussed. He is concerned about damage to their, to the garage, the house, possibly, um, person damage too. He did come with a couple of proposals for netting possibly to put along the fields, or not allowing adult ball there, so, um. If you wanted to just go ahead and read your minutes, if Jeremy is here, if you wanted to discuss anything, you're more than welcome to come up, or.
I think we discussed it pretty, pretty in depth, and I thought you were gonna have the conversation with the council members and stuff like that, and I was just gonna observe and answer any questions or provide any more concern.
Right. I did mention to him that we will be having a joint budget meeting later in the month with Park and Rec, and looking at potentially upgrading to get the grant next year, so maybe making the improvements he's looking at, so. Um, the other concern was too, the insurance, who carries insurance, if there is a team there and a player hits the house, it's homeowner's insurance. So, that was a discussion too.
I think there's been adult ball there since the 1950s.
How few?
Seriously, there's been adult ball there since like the 1950s.
Oh, I know.
It was a baseball field, and then it was a softball field for, since the 50s, I believe.
Right. Right. I think the concern was that, that that field has kind of outgrown the, from the 1950s to the 2019s, the, the playing, the structure, the overall, um, oof, that's, you know? So, uh, any questions or concerns?
You're the baseball expert on the council. He's putting netting all around his house, so, I mean.
Well, no, they talked about netting a lot.
I know, but that wouldn't matter, because it's not like they're just straight line drives, they're going home plate, they're going directly to the house, they're going up and over the trees and landing down, and putting netting all the way around everybody's house, it would just be, it'd be a pain, but I'm sure we'll talk about the Park and Rec meeting, I don't know how in-depth we're gonna go into it now, and.
Yeah, no, like I told them, we would be discussing it at the joint meeting in June, was it June 29?
I'm gonna. 24th.
24th, that's July 29, that they're looking. Um, so, you know, just kind of letting you guys know that there are concerns out there and a couple of the potential, um, solutions. Did Jeremy have anything else that you wanted to add?
Is, is that throwing me open also?
Yes, all of our meetings are open. Yep. All right. Planning zoning, Deb?
Um, just number two, I just wanted to quick tell you that the time I did the agenda, they had not had their Park and Rec meetings, they know the next one's going to be, it's going to be Wednesday, July 10 at 5:30. Uh, planning zoning, what we talked about at the May 8 meeting is, we finalized the solar energy systems ordinance. And some of the things that were discussed is Miles Campbell, the planner, discussed first of all screening, and he gave us those icons for fences, plantings, and berm. And what he recommended, and what planning's only discussed and decided on, is that in the ordinance, they're gonna have language that has screen, screening in the form of a combination of either plantings and fence, or plantings and a berm. The only thing he cautioned about, uh, the plantings and the berm is that in the future if a developer comes, and, because that's an interim use for the solar farm, if a developer comes and wants to develop that land, then it's, it's a little more costly for him to move that berm, but the Planning Zoning Commission basically decided that that's something that that developer would have to make a decision on if he wants to develop that land.
Can that be the solar's problem, you know? But they're supposed to return to landing the land and they accept that?
I, I, no, because I don't think it's in their, in their news permit.
Yeah, there's a decommissioning.
Is there, okay.
Yeah, some kind of decommissioning plan in the, so. But I, the one that's, that's there right now, I don't know the exact language of it, because there was not a berm in that language, so you would probably have to change the decommissioning part of it too, I don't know. You'll have to talk to Miles about that.
Um, the next thing they talked about was setbacks, and they did not decide to change anything with the setbacks. Right now, they're 100 feet from all property lines for a commercial solar farm. The next thing that he talked to about was the solar farm in reference to the comp plan, because you want any development of a solar farm not to impact negatively in the future of what you have in your comp plan. So, what they decided there is, it's very simple language, just saying that any proposed solar farm that would fall within the city's interim build scenario, as outlined and shown on such and such page of the comprehensive plan, is subject to review by commission and council for its consistency with the comprehensive plan, and the expected growth of the city within the period of the interim use permit. So, that's the least drastic suggestion in the planning zoning report. And then the other thing that they wanted in there was the conditions of consistency. And then the other thing that they wanted in there was the conditions of consistency. And it states that number one, the site should not immediately abut an existing development which utilizes urban utilities, and number two, the site should not impede the logical extension of urban utilities or public right-of-ways in the area of the city's interim build scenario. This is subject to review of both the Planning Commission, as well as the City Engineer and Public Works Director. And then he talked a little bit about urban development as a permit termination event, but they did not decide to go with that. And then the rest of the meeting, what he did is he gave an update on the property at 140 Nelson Boulevard, which is the yellow house. They're working with the Chapman family to open up a coffee shop there, and possibly a greenhouse. So there's a lot of site planning that has to be done as far as parking and things like that, and eventually we'll have to Plan Zoning, we'll have to a public hearing to review all that. I think they need a CUP for that property too. Casey, he gave an update on Casey's building, and all he said there was that the gentleman was interested in having the skid steer part shop there. He sells skid steers, but he would like that location to show the parts, because it's perfect location at Highway 12. And then the last one was that he was working on the concept plan for the rubber group or the preserve housing development. We were supposed to maybe have a public hearing for that property as well at this next meeting, but they didn't get their stuff in in time, so the only public hearing we're having on July 10th is for the solar ordinance, just finalizing it and taking public comment. And then finally, we discussed the July meeting. We have moved that to July 10th at the same time, and here at the community center. So, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
You're up, I guess.
What I wanted to do was to make a motion to reinstate Catherine Nybergert, back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Did Catherine fill out an application?
Well, she was on it before.
Right, but they have to fill out an application in order to do that.
You just can't reinstate her.
No, because she has to put an effort in there to show an interest.
That was it.
All right, Wayne?
All right, back in April, I started calling around on quotes for the volleyball court, and we also making a pickleball court. So far, I've got one quote, one company, I think, one on the business, and the other one, I think, thinks we're too small, and they don't want a court. So only have one court.
Okay. What was it, $9,000 something?
$9,272.
Okay.
Let's redo the whole court, put both on the same court.
What's, what's your thoughts on that? I know when we talked last week, you were saying that it's in desperate need of it.
Yeah, it's black now, it should be green, and then if they want pickleball, it's gotta be all restripped. And the outfit is based on where we used to close black.
Wayne, I'm guessing it's been at least 10 years since it's been done. At least, so it's, it well needs it.
Okay.
And I think we paid, just for painting and striving, I think we paid, I wanna say it was like $5,000 or $6,000, like 10 years ago. So that's not, that's not outlined.
Right. Okay, so you're looking for a motion to go ahead?
Yes.
The amount, whoever makes the motion is $9,272.
I will make a motion then to proceed with resurfacing of the tennis court for $9,272.
I'll second that.
Tom?
Hi.
Ben?
Hi.
Lloyd?
Hi.
Curry?
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0.
And then, we'd like to discuss hanging tags on houses for great utility payments.
Yep.
And what we're doing, we got a guy in the office that spends a couple of days calling people, reminding them that they're past due. So we hang tags, and we send out a letter explaining, you get the tag, you got 24 hours to pay it up, or we shut you off. No more phone calls, it is what it is. We all talk in the office, and we kinda like to go with that.
That's what we used to do.
Yep.
Wayne, do you remember when we stopped doing that?
Sean quit doing it, and it was probably five, four years ago, five years ago, by five.
With Anna, way back, yeah.
Yeah. He just decided it was, that we were gonna quit, and then, once we quit doing it, then Anna started calling people, because she didn't want everybody, the water shut off because of the charges, but it's getting out of hand. I mean, she's, she's making 50 phone calls to people to remind them to pay their bill.
Wow, that's at the end, right?
At the very end, that's after we send out a notice that says, you have 15 days to pay your bill, and then she sends emails, and then she still tries to call people, and it's, I mean, it's getting out of control.
Because we, she usually starts with at least like 200, right around there.
But we went to Anna, maybe hang tags, because we'd sent out the notices, and, and we thought like the first month that we do it, she'll still call everybody and say, okay, I'm calling you for the last time, or sending an email for the last time, we'll not be doing this anymore, you'll be getting that notice on your door, and that's it. So it's kind of going back to what we were doing before.
Right, so they originally get that first notice out, what, the 23rd, right around there?
Yeah.
And then they have until the 5th, and then after that, then the, then it'll be hung up.
Notice, you have 24 hours to make arrangements, or we'll just shut it off.
Because, I mean, it's really, so you get, we do the bill on the 25th, so like the ones we're doing right now, were run on April 25th. They had till May 20th to pay them. By May 23rd, they still weren't paying, so she sent out a late notice, and now it's June, the beginning of June, and she's still, they're shutting water off, I mean, like, I think they ended up finally not having to do anybody, but...
There's one.
Or one.
There's one, and unfortunately, the contact information she asked for the person is not the person. And so if you would hang this bright notice on their door, then they have the information to get a hold of the city hall. It, it's, I was saying that the cities that I've worked in, I've never known a city where they called them. She spent two, eight over days calling this last time, and she was very, very frustrated, not just calling, but emailing people. And so I just wanna take this burden off of her. There is a couple of things that, I think that we maybe should have a motion for you to proceed with this, because there's a couple of things that we have to consider here. We are going to charge, when they used to hang the tags, that was a long time ago, they would charge $10. I think that we take into consideration the time it takes for public works. I mean, if they, if they do work on your property, they're, they get paid $100 an hour. So I think that we should up that to $20, $25 when we hang the tag, there's a fee for the painting the tag. And then, some of the things that we're gonna change is in the past, they gave them until 4 o'clock to pay, and we decided, Wayne, I didn't have an opportunity to talk to you about this, and I'm sorry, but we decided at the end of the day that we would change that to 1 o'clock, because otherwise, you have a potential paying, the public works guys overtime to go out and turn that water back on.
So, you should call until 12:00 or 4:00?
Yeah, so Jess said that she felt 1 o'clock was an ample time for them to get their money in. And at that point, they do have to pay the $50 disconnect fee, the $50 reconnect fee, and they have to pay the $25 posting notice plus the past due balance. So, other than that, there's some information on here that needs to be changed, because I just took this from the city of Winstead and I quick changed it, but we don't have at the bottom, we don't have 10% per Anna, we have 5% per month. So that's gotta be changed. And so, and we do shut offs either on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, because of the city's schedule, the city hall being open, which just works better on those days. So I don't know, Wendy, don't you think maybe a motion would be best to move forward with this? Because then what we're gonna do, like Wendy said, she's gonna call them one more time next month, and tell them that this is the last time, she's gonna advertise it in the newsletter, and she's gonna advertise it on the website. And then people will hear it now, if they watch the meeting. But we, it's open for discussion, Wayne, Wendy, and I can answer any questions. I just personally think this is the best road to go. I, like, I use the example before the meeting started tonight, Excel Energy or your credit card company will call you when your bill's past due. Nobody does that. It's, it's too time-consuming, and actually kind of ridiculous to expect them to do that, so.
Any discussion?
When would these be posted on their doors? Is kind of my question.
The 5th.
The 5th.
So, just no matter what, the 5th, if that's a Friday, and then...
No, they would go until Monday.
Okay. That was kind of what I was curious about, because if it's always on the 5th, or whatever day, it's Friday, then they go all Sunday.
We won't even do it on a Thursday, because we leave Friday at 11. So we would do it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, so if it's, you know, if the 5th falls on Thursday or Friday, we won't do it till Monday. So even if they even get through the weekend.
Well, and to be honest with you, residents have a concern about this. Utility bills are always due on the 20th every month. It's never changed, so they're due on the 20th every month. So you just need to budget for that day, and, or whatever you need to do to make sure that they're paid on the 20th.
Yeah, like, I can set up automatic pay.
Right, fine.
You know, something for you, but just take care of it.
So anyways, I guess if you decide that you're okay with this, and you would like to make a motion, I guess the motion would just be to have staff move forward with the disconnect notice as presented.
I'll make a motion for staff to move forward with disconnect notice with the corrections that you had indicated.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Hey, Wayne, were you ever able to pick up a energy-efficient fridge from Carver?
Yes, yes.
Okay, will that be getting in there soon?
I'll have to make arrangements to get the other stuff out there.
Okay, good, good. I'm glad to hear that, because I, you know, I know, Sheldon commented that it's very hot in there, so if we can do something to cut down on the heat for you, it's...
Open the door.
Well, I mean...
Open the door!
No, there's not a breeze, so it's not...
Yeah.
Wayne got it, there's two doors.
So we have a brand-new refrigerator sitting someplace?
What's that?
We have a brand-new refrigerator sitting someplace?
Sitting on the pickup, because it's heavy.
They don't wanna move it twice, and they don't wanna leave it on the pickup, we don't want it to be damaged.
We have a stop picture, that would be signed together?
No, I just, I just asked you some questions.
I know. Me and Wayne have talked a lot. All right, Deb?
Okay.
One other thing I wanna bring up too, where are we with Highway 25, the proven project?
Um, I just got an email from the meeting today. They have, she had a public purpose hearing with Wright County, and the judge determined that the takings were necessary and served a public purpose, so they did, the property, the majority of property owners did agree to it, and some have been paid already. They are going to have to go to trial for the Rositzkas, the Johnsons, and there's a gap parcel, where the ownership of the property is unknown, so they are gonna have to go to trial for that. And we got an email today from Dan Wilson, generated by him and Amy, that me, the city, are going to have to pay Wright County Court Services $38,550 in escrow. So, to cover those three properties, in the event that they go to trial, and if they would change their mind through the trial process.
What was that number?
$38,000, $38,550. That's just for the escrow for Wright County courthouse.
Councilmember Johnson, I guess I have a question for you. When, you know, you are always first to state, you know, that you're interested in saving the city of Montrose money. That's a prime responsibility of a council member. So I don't, I don't quite understand, since you voted for this path down there, can I finish speaking?
There's a lot of things you don't know about this, and I can't discuss it, because my attorney's taken here.
Can I finish speaking?
See, I'm in the conversation.
Not for, not for me, it isn't.
Can we add this to the agenda somewhere?
Well, I mean, it's, it's all, it's, you know...
I mean, I don't have a problem, but I've been accused of adding things onto an agenda that wasn't, it wasn't on there. So, I mean, if we wanna discuss it, are we allowed to do that?
Well, yeah, because, are you asking it under the Public Works Department?
Yeah.
Because they have it.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right.
I just, I just don't understand how, I mean, we're gonna wind up with attorney fees, engineering fees, appraisal fees. I mean, what, you know, I don't understand what's going on here. Is it a matter of money, or, I thought all the offerings on the, the parcels were fair and equitable appraisals.
That's, yes, they are.
I think it's something the public needs to be aware of, so.
Do you have any more discussion on that? Anyone? Okay. Deb?
Okay. I just wanted to present you some information. You had on February 11th, you had directed staff to, to start the process to hire a part-time administrative assistant. At that same meeting, you directed us to move forward with the process to do that. And so, we did advertise a position on the Minnesota City's job site, the Municipal Corporate Finance Officers Association of Minnesota's website, the Wright County Journal Press, and the Delano Herald-Journal. We did receive seven very good applications. Three of us at city hall scored those seven applications and made the determination to interview two candidates. When we scored them, we looked at the gaps, and so there were two, and then it went down quite a bit. They were in the 50s, and it went down to the 20s. So, the interview committee was, consisted of myself, Ms. Manson, and Ms. Boddenwell, because we'll be working with that person, and we thought it'd be good to bring someone from Public Works in, because they'll be dealing with that person as well. And so, Mr. McCormick picked Mr. Reader, water, wastewater operator. We did the interviews on May 29th. This committee that we had to work very well together, both of whom are very qualified in the position, and after discussions among the interview committee, we decided to ask the city council for approval to offer the job to Ms. Heidi Donlon. Just a little history on her, she works for the city of St. Michael right now, and she is doing the exact same job, so there'd be a little training to bring her in. As far as the budget for this, there is money in the budget. The salary range we advertise is 14 to 16 per owner, we would like to go to 16, because she currently in St. Michael's is making 18 to 80. But she just lives outside of Buffalo, and so she was happy about not having to drive anymore. She seemed, I thought, did you think agreeable to that amount of money? And then, what I would do is I would do a six-month performance review in December, because there's six months with length, it'd be up in December. And at that point, she would increase the same as all the other employees. She's a good reunion, because she's part-time, but she would increase the 2% cost of living and the 2% merit, if she has a good performance review. And then, each year on January 1st, it would be the same thing, whenever the employees are getting as far as cost of living and merit, she would get the same. So I guess there's, I put on here two options, you can approve the hiring of her, or if you have any other ideas or options. Otherwise, the motion is listed for you under Council Action, and I can take. I did include her job description for you, and I can answer any questions I can be asked.
I'll make a motion to hire Ms. Heidi Donlon for part-time admin assistant with the city of Montrose, at a starting wage of $16 per call. Can we have a little discussion?
Well, we need a second.
Second.
Now we can have a discussion.
Okay. My question was, then on December, she's gonna get the 4%. And then is she gonna get 4% again in January?
No, she'll get it in January.
She's gonna get it for 4%.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. It was in a double dip there.
And you think that, that she'll work great with you guys, like, or she's gonna fit in at the, at city hall, and it's gonna be all...
All four of us thought that. And I, and Wendy and I checked her references and glowing references. Very hardworking, very driven, does things without, she takes the initiative to do things on her own, shows up for work, she's very reliable. She was very, very excited about the job, so.
Yeah, well, I think just too with, there's not many of you there, so just that, as long as she'll work well, probably, I think it's a great idea. probably I think it's a great idea.
All right.
Now, Deb, are you going to write, are you going to write her, uh, review or, or management objectives out in for her?
Yes, yep. We'll follow the job description, basically, and I already have stuff lined up for her to do. Fair, I don't know, so I've got the piles on the desk on the left side.
So, um, upon approval tonight, you will call her and have her start potentially, when?
We'll offer her the job. I'm just asking you for the approval to offer her the job.
Do you want to give a two-week notice?
A two-week notice yet, okay. All right, we have a first and a second, and we're going to go Kirby.
Aye.
I, Lloyd.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Uh, there's nothing other old business, new business, we moved the urgency management.
There is one more thing I would.
I just wanted to.
Oh, yeah, the city hall on July fourth.
I wanted to remind the general public that the city hall offices will be closed on Thursday, July fourth, and Friday, July fifth, in observance of the July Fourth holiday.
All right, Wendy.
So I started about two years ago trying to get someone to replace the doors, the two small doors in here. I got one quote back in twenty-seventeen from Russell Security, which is the company out of Buffalo that does all of our, our locks, bars, and all of our keypads and stuff. And they gave me a quote and I could not get another quote. I asked Jomak, who did our city hall, a number of times, and he kept saying, yep, yep, but he never did. I asked Wade, Apple from Apple, Apple Exteriors, I could never get another quote from him. I don't know anybody else to ask. So I got an updated quote from Russell's. And actually, um, what he quoted me for was for two of the, um, what are they called? Um, not bio, whatever kind of doors. Fiber glass doors, which are a lot lighter weight and they basically last forever. That's what we put up at city hall now and they're so much lighter than these big steel doors. Um, so I got the quote for those, uh, fifty-two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Wade looked at the, the frames, the frames are fine, they'll just put the doors out, they'll put on the new, the new closers and the new bars. And before he does that, um, I asked Mike to give me a quote. He will paint them for three hundred dollars before they install them, so they'll be painted, which will make them last a long time because he'll put it on with the body paint from down there. So I'm asking for you to, um, approve me to go ahead and have Russell replace these doors before they fall off to hinges, um, for fifty-five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve new community center side doors. I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All right, I'll go, I, Tom.
Aye.
Kirby.
Aye.
Lloyd.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Upcoming meetings, Montrose Streets Gate meeting as well as Planning and Zoning, Montrose Streets Gate is five thirty and Planning and Zoning is at seven on Wednesday, June nineteenth. Joint Council on Park meeting is Monday, June twenty-fourth at three thirty. The next council meeting is July eighth at seven. Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is set at July tenth at seven. City Council Workshop, July twenty-ninth. Uh, acknowledgements.
I'm going to go first this time. I'd like to acknowledge the local VFW of Post nineteen oh one and the Scouts and the ambassadors and all those who attended the, uh, Memorial Day honoring of those who gave their life for our country.
All right. Um, I would like to acknowledge Roy and Sylvia Henry for the planting of the flowers on ninety-twelve, um, as well as Paula Thompson for replanting the plants that are out there due to the fact that they are lovely weather here in Minnesota. They grow, so then they had to be replanted, so I'd like to thank them for doing that. Anybody else?
I'd like to thank city staff for putting in the time that they do, preparing our packets for us and digging, putting together all the information so, you know, so we have the information in front of us so we can make, um, good decisions. Thank you. Yeah, I like all the detail we get with them, so.
Anybody else? Do you want to motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn? I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.